All right, I guess they say it's seven o'clock somewhere, right? So we're gonna get started here, so welcome everyone. First, I'm going to ask that you all turn off your cellphones or airplane, put them on airplane mode or silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance. So again, welcome all of you here this evening and also for those that will be watching later on on YouTube. I'm gonna start out with introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. John Chumperland is absent this evening, as you can see. And then we also have on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB is Allison Fauski. We have our director of administration, Ally Palfus. And then we have our director of public works, Gary Peters. And behind them, we have Don Matzko, who is our city clerk, and she is taking minutes. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, our city administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director, David Abel, our community development director. And then sitting in for Sarah Sensala this evening, we have back with us Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven, our attorney, and then our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, I'll ask the council, approve, a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I don't have any changes. I don't think there are any changes or additions, so is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Ms. Mortenson made that motion, Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for O. We don't have any special presentations this evening, so we'll move on to persons to be heard. I wonder if any of you would like to speak? So with that, anybody that signed up, so first of all, you will have to come to the podium. You have to state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes, and because we have a lot of people here this evening signed up, I'm going to limit it to the three minutes. I also want to make it clear that we are going to be holding, in case you haven't heard yet, we're going to be holding here at City Hall on August 16th. It's a Tuesday evening. We will be holding a neighborhood meeting for your neighborhood, for, for the project, for the Morning View, East View, Wood Edge area. And we will be presenting all of the information that we have. We'll be talking about the project. We'll be talking about why we're doing the project, et cetera. And we will also be giving all of you an adequate time to ask your questions, to make your comments as well. So just so you know that, that's coming up. It'll be again, August 16th, from six, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So if that, and the other thing I want to say is, no, we are not going to be assessing you $25,000. So if that helps us sleep better tonight, we will then move on. But with that, I'll start out. We have Nick Ewing.
My name is Nick Ewing. I live at 1400 Westwood Drive in Minatrista. I've lived there about 23 years. I'd like to address the council tonight on the subject of the proposed 2023 road project for East View, Morning View, and Westwood. I understand the council is considering reconstruction based on the belief that we have a significant history of water main breaks. I urge the council to look closely at the data, where you'll see only five water main breaks in the last 15 years, all occurring at the intersection of Morning View Drive and Westwood Drive. Three of these occurred within four months in early 2015. No water main breaks have occurred in the last seven years. I think the data points to facility expansions upstream from Lake Minnetonka, Hilltop, the high school, which significantly increased the volume of storm water that flowed through the creek that passes through that intersection. The city undertook a project in 2015 to resolve this issue. The creek that flows through there, there was construction to reinforce the banks. And there have been no problems with broken water mains or the creeks escaping its banks since then. I know this personally because I live to the south of that creek. I urge the council to consider this and not waste taxpayer dollars fixing a problem that does not exist. Please vote for reclamation of the East View, Morning View, Westwood Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Next, we have Mike Ho. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Mike Ho. I live at 5420 East View Avenue. Been there 20-plus years. Just a couple of questions. I know you're not here to answer questions, but I just want to have them stated. First of all, regarding engineering on this east, I'm sorry, regarding the East View Avenue and Westwood Morning View project, the engineering, is it true that the engineers are the ones referring what their recommendation is to then do the work themselves, what they recommended?
No, they don't do the work. No.
Okay. So there's no monetary benefit of that or no conflict of interest as well?
No. They, the project has to be bid out. It has to go out for bid.
Okay. Are they one of the bidders, or is that?
No. No, they won't bid it. Yeah.
All right, that's understood. Thank you for answering. And then, but what, and then the other word, words, or in other terms, the curb and gutter, we don't want. I mean, I've lived there, like I said, 20-plus years. Many of these people, I'm sure, would concur with that statement. It's, it's a payment that we don't want to get involved in. It's too much work. It's gonna tear up the road, not to mention water main. There's some other statistics on that, and I know other people talked about that, but I think that's unnecessary. Let's just rebuild what we have. It'll be good for another 25 years or more, and that's all that's necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ho. Christine Devink.
Hello, I'm Christine Devink. I live at 5335 East View Avenue. And I am here to talk about the roads as well. In March of the current year, the costs for the East View, Morning View, Westwood project were published. And at that time, we were told that WSB told us that the cost to reclaim the road was estimated to be $54 a square foot. I just, thank you. A square yard. And that reconstruction of the same property, of the same road, would be $240 a square yard. It's going to be, and I ask of you, very important for you to understand and then to be able to explain to the citizens of this neighborhood that $190 difference. To reclaim it, to mash it up and put it back down and smooth it over is, we'll make it really easy, $50 a square yard. To take it out, dig it up, take it away, and then go down and replace the water main is $240. The difference of $190 a square yard, if you multiply it out by the 18,090 square yards, is pretty close to $3.8 million. That's a big number. And it's going to be important to keep in mind that sustainability initiatives today matter. And replacement of water mains that haven't had issues in more than seven years is wasteful. In my opinion, we should not be replacing something that isn't broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devink. Next, we have Cindy Notch.
My name is Cindy Notch, and I live at 1250 Morning View Drive. I sent a handout, and I like to bring handouts. So, but I want you to set aside those for a second. I want to tell you a little story. So let's just say for a moment that you have a 49-year-old house that you love. And about seven years ago, I had a nasty leak under my kitchen sink. And I called the plumber. He came out, fixed it, but he said, "This is really a tricky one, so watch it, because I'm not sure I have it 100% fixed." So a month later, it was leaking again, and he came out and told me the same thing. "I'm trying to fix it, and I think I have it, but I want you to watch it." The third time, he said, "Okay, I got it this time, and it's going to be fine." And it was. And now, seven years later, I'm a little older, thinking about upgrading my bathroom, you know, lock-in shower, that kind of stuff. So I called the same plumber. And he came out, he looked at my existing bathroom, we discussed my remodel ideas, and the plumber said, "Well, in addition to remodeling your bathroom, I'm going to need to replace all of the water pipes in your entire house, because you had this leak under your kitchen sink seven years ago." Now I ask you, if it was your house, what would you be telling the plumber? Because that's the answer that you need to give when you are called to vote on whether or not to do a water main replacement for our neighborhood. So, that's my little story. Now, check yours and look at your hand, at your handbook and your handout. The document was recreated by WSB to analyze our roads. On page two, you'll see all the different core samples. And then I want you to flip to page three to review the table above page number four. On the left column is each individual core sample that they took all the way along the neighborhood. And note the column that says, "Recommendation: Full Depth Reclamation." Each and every core said, "Full Depth Reclamation." That's the part where you just take the top eight inches, chew it up, stick it back down, put new asphalt, and done. That was in June of 2019. Not one word about water main issues. That date's very important. And there certainly have been no water main problems since 2019. So here's the crux of your decision. What changed between WSB's 2019 recommendation of full depth reclamation and the current March 22 recommendation to reconstruct the road, including replacement of our water main? You deserve an honest answer to that question, and so do we. And to me, that's about $4 million of your proposed $5.2 million question on the table. And I would strongly recommend that you vote for reclamation instead of reconstruction. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Notch. Mr. Notch?
Hello, I'm Tom Notch. I live at 1250 Morning View Drive. I've lived there for about 38 years. Make one, make one correction, Lisa, too. You've mentioned to Mr. Ho here that WSB doesn't profit in any way.
I didn't say that. I said that they don't bid on the project. They don't, they don't do the construction of the project.
I heard that.
So I just want to make that clear.
I said, is there no conflict of interest?
There, there is no conflict of interest, in my opinion.
I believe there is, because if you've got a big project and there's indirect costs here that they add on to all these projects, 20%.
Sure.
So on this 5.2 million, there's over a million going to WSB. If you had no project, there'd be nothing going to WSB. So how in the world can you say that is, I don't get it, okay? There's a couple of problems here. One is, there shouldn't even be putting in a new main here. You're taking out a perfectly good ductile iron pipe, it's a six-inch ductile iron pipe, and you're replacing it with an inferior HVPE pipe. The ductile iron pipe has got a long track record. It says, "Ductile iron pipe has long been recognized as superior pipe material for water and wastewater applications. Tremendous strength, durability, allow it to be designed under conservative assumptions, conditions, experience with compromise with it." It's just got a length, especially over 100 years. We're pulling that out to put in a pipe that's of poor quality. Doesn't make any sense to me at all. From a ductile iron pipe, it uses 6.1 times the hypostatic burst pressure of HVPE pipe, which is huge. When you're flushing water hydrants, you get a water hammer effect. So that's something to look at. The other thing is, is the way the costs are being distributed here, it's not at all right. They have $4.1 million is associated with the road reconstruction. They got $1.1 million associated with the water. If you weren't doing the water at all, you'd be able to do this reclamation. That's what, in 2019, was pulled out by WSB. I ran the numbers on that. It was 920 grand for the areas on WSB's propaganda that they had there. So you'd run the numbers, type it, $54 cost per square yard. It was 920 grand, even round it up to a mil. So that means if you take 5.2 less one, that means $4.2 million bucks is really associated with the water. So even if you were gonna waste money on this water main, which makes no sense to me, $4.2 million of that whole amount should be spread out amongst all the water users in the city, not distributed just amongst our 84 parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Notch. Next, we have Craig Hainsault.
Hi, Craig.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
I'm Craig Hainsault. I live at 5440 East View Avenue. I just moved in there. My mom has lived there for 20-plus years, maybe even 30. And this pipe that they have in the ground already is good for 100 years. We're only at 50 years. I don't see any reason at all to be taking it out of there. I mean, I'm not gonna go replace stuff on my car because it's only half worn out. I'm gonna wait until it is worn out. And if they're gonna regrind the roads up, and it's good for 25 years, I don't see any good reason to be putting in new pipe and distributing all the soil around the pipe as it exists. And with all the coating and stuff they can do nowadays with the pipe, it could sleep it at any time. And I'm sure it'd be a lot cheaper if everybody wants to do it. That's all I got.
Thank you. And we're gonna be looking at all of those issues. So we're not making any decisions on the road this evening. We're not even, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda for the 15th. We're having the open house, like I said, on the 16th. We'll hear more from all of you folks, and we'll be discussing all of these issues at that meeting as well. So you bring up valid points. I appreciate your input and your comments. They're not in vain. So with that, the next ones we have are for the variance, which is later on in our, on our agenda. So I'm gonna hold off, and you will be able to speak at that time. And then we have Mike Mahada.
My name's Mike Mahada, and I live at 1020 Bayside Lane. I've lived there for about over 20 years, actually. So it sounds like there's a lot of people here because they're interested in work not being done. I'm the opposite. I am here to inquire about the dangerous and unsafe condition on West Branch Road just east of Maple Crest Drive. Mayor Whelan, I called and alerted you to that situation.
Say that again, which roads, which road west?
West Branch Road.
Okay.
Just east of Maple Crest.
Okay.
I called, if you recall, you, left a message for you, alerted you to that situation a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And then I met with Mr. Krugel and Mr. Peters at the side of the issue that I'm concerned with.
Okay.
And I'm here to inquire about what plan is to correct that dangerous and unsafe condition.
Okay, thank you. I did, I did refer that to our city administrator and our public works and public safety, because I felt that they were more well-versed in, in that. I, I'm sure, one, that is a county road. And so if that's, and maybe really briefly, I'll just have you explain just two minutes real quick.
Yeah. It was great meeting with you on site. Mr. Peters has been in contact with Hennepin County, explained that we're an advocate for doing something there, you know, like we described out there, widening it, potentially restriping it, looking at the situation. They're looking at it right now. I know Gary's actively working with them. I know that we noticed that they just striped it, which is interesting that they're doing that right before a big project. But Gary, Gary is talking to them. We don't have an update right now, but we will, we will get back to you. I know you emailed us, I believe, on Friday, so.
Well, when we met you, when we met you, agreed to let me know, give an update by the last week. Since I didn't hear back from you, I decided to come and make sure that that issue was known. It's a, these two gentlemen agree that it's a dangerous and unsafe situation out there for pedestrians and bicyclists. And if something's not done about that, somebody's gonna get seriously hurt.
The other thing I would highly recommend to you, because it is a county road, so we don't have, we can try and interject, if you will, our, our concerns, I would highly recommend that you call your county commissioner and talk to him and see if he can help you also move this forward. So his name is Kevin Anderson.
Thank you for the recommendation. I've done that.
Okay.
Approached the county, I met with them, and they took no action.
All right. So I'm gonna ask that our, our staff be in touch with you as soon as they can regarding any information that they have, okay? Thank you.
We need, we need something done about this.
Yes.
And we need your help to represent the safety of the citizens of Minatrista here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a Terry Dunn, who's also, let, signed up to speak.
Is there no questions for the sixth seats?
Okay.
Other people have asked the questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Just one thing.
Yes.
Anyways, anything that let, anything progress other than having these guys do car samples?
We haven't made any decisions yet, other than we want to do a project. So that's, that's yet to be determined, and we'll share all of that on the 16th, too.
What does it mean to the road?
The need to do, redo the road, so.
The road was a mania.
Mr. Dunn, if, you need to come to the.
I thought I spoke.
And I thought you said you weren't gonna speak, so please come forward.
I used to sit up there a long time ago.
Did you really?
You do!
All right. Mr. Dunn, for, for the record, just state your name and address, please.
My name's Terry Dunn, 5575 East View Avenue.
Thank you.
And I've lived here 59 years. That doesn't make me 26.
[laughing]
And I have some of the questions that some of the other people have asked, and you've answered. I just want you to go ahead without what you're going to do.
So right now, the next step is to hold a public, to hold the neighborhood meeting. And that's an opportunity for us to share our information with you and all the neighbors, and for you to ask questions and to give us your comments as well. Once we have that under our belt, then it goes back to the council and to staff, because staff may be given different direction. And then the council will debate and discuss this, and then we will make a decision.
You made statements about the road to supplant this?
Primarily, yes. We're looking at our road.
What's around the road?
Well.
Other than the layers.
Well, I tell you what, how about we get into that at the neighborhood meeting? Okay?
So we get one day, right?
Yes, we will. And we'll look forward to seeing you, Mr. Dunn, at the meeting. Thank you.
I'll be there.
Thank you. All right. So the other ones, like I said, are signed up because of the variance. Who are those individuals? Okay, so we will be, you can be addressing the council during, during that time, okay? So then that concludes our persons to be heard. So if any of you are here for the rest of the meeting, that's just fine. If you would like to leave at this point, I'll give you an opportunity to leave. But it's gonna be an exciting meeting, so you might as well stay.
[laughing] [inaudible]
And I, I hit my fellow council member gently because she had a fly on her shoulder, and so anyhow, with that, so we'll move on to consent agendas. I believe we want to pull number C, approval of our claims. Are there any others you wish to pull? Hearing none, then I just want to say one thing, I'm not pulling it, but I'm really, really excited about the guest house on Game Farm Road, because they're saving the historic barn and the historic farmhouse, and then the new house that they're building in addition to those looks like a barn. So I'm really excited about that. I think they're doing a fabulous job. I just wanted to say that. So with that, against the consent agenda items, approve our work session meeting minutes from July 18th, 2022. Approve the city council regular meeting minutes from July 18th, 2022. D is approve our guest home at 725 Game Farm Road North. E is approve award, awarding the contract with Stark Heat for replacement of the basketball court at Douglas Park. F is awarding the contract with Minnesota Pump Works for the purchase and installation of two new ABS pumps, base elbows, and pump guardrails for lift station number four. And G is approve agreement between owner and engineer, owner meaning the city, and engineer for professional services with Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, LLC. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda A, B, D, E, F, and G? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for O. And we're pulling number C. Ms. Refkin, I'll give you the honors. Why are we pulling number C?
We're pulling the claims due to the invoice from the city of St. Boniface for their engineering services. It's check number 68417. We got their invoice, but we are requesting additional information to support their invoice.
Thank you. So with that, we're gonna be approving the claims with that exception. Is there a motion to that effect? So moved. Thank you. And is there a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for O. So with that, we have no public hearings, so we'll move on to our business items. What I'm gonna do first is allow staff to give us a background, and then if the, is the applicant here? Okay, the applicant can make some comments, and then anybody else that would like to comment as well. So with that, Mr. Abel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There are a total of three applications that are associated with the property at 3830 County Road 44. The, the premise behind the request is the applicant is proposing to build a garage addition with livable space at the upper level of the addition. So the first application is a simple subdivision. That is being requested to adjust the property line in between 3830 and 3850 County Road 44. And the reason for that request is to improve some drainage concerns that have occurred over there, and so that's why that is being requested with the neighbor. The other two requests, one being a lakeside setback variance, they are asking for a variance from the 75-foot setback requirement. They're looking to go to 17.7 feet. As noted in the report, and you'll see from the survey, the existing home on the site is a non-conforming structure, because it does not comply to that lakeside setback. So they're, they're looking not to get any closer than what the current structure is, but because they are going up with the addition, it does require that lakeside setback variance to the 17.7 feet. The other variance that's being requested is a hardcover variance. As the council knows, we have a 25% maximum hardcover for lots that are in the Lakeshore Overlay District. What they're asking to go to is 36.39% of the lot being covered in hardcover. And, and again, the lot as it sits today is not conforming in that fashion as well. It does exceed the hardcover allotment. The current hardcover is at 45%. So they are improving the overall hardcover with their request, but it does not bring it to the 25% threshold, so hence the reason for the requested variance. The planning commission did hold a public hearing, and they reviewed the two variances at their July 25 meeting. They separated the two variances and voted separately on them. It was a 4-0 recommendation of approval for the lakeside variance. And then for the hardcover variance, it was a three-to-one vote to recommend approval of the hardcover variance. So like I said, they separated that, those two out. As noted in the report, in terms of taking action tonight, because there are three separate items, and it was not a unanimous vote on the hardcover from the planning commission, we did not include resolutions for adoption this evening. We wanted to get direction from council as to what their wishes were with these three separate requests, and we'll bring back those resolutions at your next meeting in August for ultimate approval and adoption. So just wanted to note that, that certainly still take a vote, but we'll bring resolutions back at the next meeting. I can stand for any questions, and as you said, the applicants are in the audience this evening as well.
All right. We'll hear from the applicants first, unless you have specific questions at this time?
No, let's hear from here.
Okay. All right.[1787.13]
Our shirt for the forty game stream rolling America. I'm here representing Mr. Bernardi and Mr. DeWitt in this process. I'd like to give some background information to everybody. Mr. Bernardi purchased this property in two thousand and nineteen. Spent several years trying to determine how best to update the existing structure to make it more suitable for his family and his family. What options did he consider? Refurbish the tennis court, add some lights as a form of entertainment for his family. That option is high on seasonal. Two, enclose the tennis court with a structure to make it year-round. Attractive idea, but doesn't address any of the needs of the older room. Three, tear out the tennis court and add a garage. This option had solved the problem for vehicles a bit very much, but unfortunately eliminated the option for his family. Four, add a structure to the existing house. Mr. Bernardi works remotely, so he needs to dedicate a space which he currently doesn't have. Add additional bedroom space to accommodate his family. Modernize the house by addressing utilities, energy efficiency, and resolving existence, maintenance issues such as the roof. What obstacle did Mr. Bernardi discover while trying to make a decision in this process? Hardcover currently forty-five point zero one percent is more than twenty-five. He needs the variance because he's closer than seventy-five foot setback. And then he got to try to figure out how to respond to his neighbor, Mr. DeWitt, because Mr. DeWitt would like to acquire a small portion of his property for drainage issues. And then in his existing driveway, it's currently Jim Gray's property, that's the neighbor, Jim. All right, as you can see, a lot to process there, simple answers. However, after careful consideration of the issues, Mr. Bernardi is proposing our best policy. One, a non-existent house, do not alter the footprint, but add additional level to the house. This will allow for the addition of a home office, additional space for his family. Roof maintenance issues will be resolved, energy efficiency will be resolved, modernization of utilities electrically to that apartment. Two, garage space to not accommodate existing vehicles. Remove the entire tennis court. Add a structure to the house that can function both as a sport court and a garage. This allows Mr. Bernardi's family to maintain the exercise and entertainment feature as well as gaining support from his community. C, build this entire structure outside of the seventy-five foot setback other than a small connector hallway between the two structures. Drive relocate the driveway from Jim Gray's property, the neighbor to the north, so it resides entirely in Mr. Bernardi's property. I spoke with Michael Olmstead from Hennepin County Public Works. He was very familiar with this property. Mr. Olmstead was aware of the driveway, of the driveway being on the neighbor's property. Mr. Olmstead was aware of the tennis court and was pleased to learn that in our proposal, the tennis court is going away and would not be a distraction to passing vehicles. Mr. Olmstead has no issue with moving the driveway. He sent a paper paperwork for that. The conveyance, allow Mr. DeWitt to acquire a small portion of Mr. Bernardi's lot to solve issues, solve the following issues. Fix drainage and his property to allow better water management prior to running. Install a rain garden with consultation from the watershed district filter one off prior entry. Expand his current lakeshore restoration to stop erosion, primary quality of the ice shelf does improve your water quality. More detailed letters dating above from Mr. DeWitt was submitted. It should be in your packet, otherwise I have copies. Hardcover currently we're forty-five point one percent. Our proposal would result in a significant improvement by reducing that number to thirty-six point three nine. You may determine that making twenty-five percent mark is more important than Mr. DeWitt's improvements. And when made the conveyance, this proposal still won't make twenty-five percent. When discussing our proposal, the planning commission spent most of their time addressing hardcover and felt that the improvements that are planned were to relax the hardcover number because we are significantly reducing our recover by thirty percent of what it is. We are helping Mr. DeWitt address water drainage issues and he plans on doing water quality control measures within that conveyance. As you can see, this proposal fixes several issues that were not created, I'm sorry, that were created by lot splits that happened many years ago by parties that are no longer involved. This proposal resolves the following. Move the driveway off Mr. Gray's property. Mr. DeWitt's water drainage issues were resolved. The county's concern about the tennis court being a distraction go away. Significantly improve hardcover percentage. It allows the updating of existing materials to better serve our family. In conclusion, this has been a long, at times stressful process for Mr. Bernardi. This proposal is a win for his neighbors, the city, county, and himself. Ms. Bernardi and I will ask for your approval.
Thank you. Mr. DeWitt, did you want to make any comments?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Jim DeWitt. I live at thirty-eight fifty County Road forty-four in Mississauga. May I point at that map, please?
Sure.
So this property is right here in this isthmus. And my house is right next to Grant's. But it's directly in between House Ted Bay and West Upper. And it's a skinniest part of that stretch.
Right.
When my wife Karen and I bought that lot in two thousand and nineteen, that had not been, that had been abandoned since two thousand, since nineteen sixty-five. In fact, Mr. Gray was eighty years old.
Mr. Gray was, yeah.
He was the newlywed there and then tornado took the cottage away. So that lot had just been untended. The lot is low. The original survey I had Roanoke Associates do had the lot at about nine twenty-nine plus. Ordinary high watermark, of course, is nine twenty-nine and four. So it perpetually wet and flooded and that was a heavy thing for the ducks and geese, but not for the pups. When we improved the lot, we were able to, within the confines of the lot we had to work with, we were able to improve it and raise the levels. But right where it butts up to Grant's yard, it still goes low. And so there's that, it's way better. That's the good news. But right at that interface, it gets, it just gets, it's just always wet. I was out there yesterday. I pulled some weeds up and you don't pull the weed up, you just pull like this thing apart. So the intent is every piece of property I've ever owned, I just want to improve it. Now, not just for me, but for the people that are coming after me a long time ago, or a long time in the future, rather, excuse me. And so the intent here is on County Road forty-four, starting at about Bloring Drive, that water drainage goes down that ditch along the east side of forty-four. And then it goes right after, goes underneath House Ted Bay. So I would want to put something in there, a rain garden, you know, work in concert with Hennepin County and the Minnehawkee watershed district to improve that water going to House Ted Bay. It may be a teeny tiny improvement, but I think House Ted Bay is all the help it can get. And as far as West Upper, you know, we worked with Minnehawkee watershed district in the permit for what we did to the lakeshore. That cove, the way that that cuts in, how that conducts like that, the ice really pushes up on that and does a number on the shore. So we worked with them, we got the shape they wanted, they wanted the plants. And so that was a positive experience for us. So that's what we're trying to do is that's right next to my lot. It's kind of a no man's land for the grand slot and we just want to improve the drainage.
Sure.
Help out House Ted Bay and give a shout out to West Upper. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I think that's everybody that signed up for this. So let's take it one, one at a time. There's three different things. Let's talk about the lot split and so on. I don't have a problem with that. If both property owners are in favor of that and I understand what the DeWitts want to do and very good. So I, we wouldn't have a problem with that. With the, so if everything works out, I think we can go ahead and say, yes, we can do a resolution to that effect. However, I think the applicants for the variance, I'm not in favor of giving you a hardcover variance. I think that's a slippery slope. You have the opportunity here to bring this into compliance. And, and I think when you look at our ordinance for a variance, you have to prove a hardship. And I have a real hard time saying you have a hardship and giving you a variance when there's a sixty by forty-six foot garage. That's, that's not within the ordinance and I just have a real hard time with that. We have an opportunity here for you to have a beautiful home and you don't have to move it. You can go up like I think is, you know, you say you're seventeen feet from the water's edge. That's very close. But to then say, well, we can't bring it into compliance with the twenty-five foot percent hardcover, to me, that's, that's just not reality. So that's where I'm coming from.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Grant Bernardi, three eight three zero County Road forty-four. So I, I have gone through many different iterations on how this works and what I could do. And there are options that allow me to bring this into compliance, but that doesn't allow me to do a conveyance to my neighbor for the drainage that he's asking for. And it doesn't allow me necessarily to get rid of the tennis court or do some of the things that I want to do there. The tennis court we are using, not a lot, but you know, if people have been by before, sometimes the lights are on. We're out there playing volleyball with the kids or tennis or badminton. So it is something that if I had and used, you know, it provides some sort of outdoor recreation for the kids. The garage is not just a garage, so the majority of the garage is actually an indoor sport court. So there'll be a basketball area, there'll be a badminton area, there'll be a tennis area so that my kids can not only enjoy the sports that the tennis court provided, but they can enjoy them all year round. For me personally, what I'm doing for this is not only just doing what I want to do or hopefully, you know, improving the house that's there, but I'm also getting rid of a nuisance, having those lights and having that tennis court right by the road. The city can't do any work in that area because if they do, they have to actually replace the tennis court if they do any work there. And I don't know if that will change the number of accidents on this road, but there's been numerous accidents on this road in this turn specifically because of where it opens up. And I don't know if it's specifically tennis court related or lights related, but there's definitely been many there. We just lost a telephone pole on June seventeenth on two thousand and twenty-one that had to be replaced because a car took it out. So I wasn't, I wasn't around. Jim sent me all the information on it and gave me the update. But this happens all the time on that turn. So we'll be taking some of those things out, some of those distractions in the area that are doing that. In order to do this, I'm also correcting two problems that existed that, you know, that I didn't, wasn't a part of. One, the drainage issues because of the new home. And two, this driveway has been on Mr. Gray's property since the last owner did a renovation, which I understand created a big rift there, causing one of those people to want to move out. So I understand the hardcover requirement and I think what I was looking at and what I was hoping for is because I'm making such a drastic improvement and I'm also, A, getting rid of the nuisance of the tennis court and then B and C, helping a neighbor with a drainage issue and moving my driveway, that I think is some consideration for the vast improvement of hardcover that I'm making in this example.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of the applicant?
Okay.
Would you like to make a comment?
I would like to make a comment. My name is Katie Lanfer. My address is thirty-eight thirty County Road forty-four. The one comment that I don't think has been brought up is the fact if we don't sell the property to the neighbors, that hardcover is all thirty percent. And I think that that's another piece to consider. By us selling off fifteen feet of shoreline, that brings it into the thirty-five percent. So really what you guys are getting is forty-five percent out of thirty. But we're asking to sell a fortune to the neighborhood to help improve that water drainage. So we are getting very, very close to that twenty-five percent variance.
So what would it actually take?
Thank you. So what would it actually take for you to get down to twenty-five?
It would probably take us removing a lot more concrete that's on our property now, which, as you guys just heard in the last discussion, can be very, very expensive to pull out concrete that's on there.
But you can do it. There's, there's other ways too. You can put pervious pavers in for a driveway. Here's the thing, we can't look at cost as an, as a, how to say, reason to give you a variance. We have to look at can the property be used in a normal fashion, so to speak? And maybe David can chime in here in terms of the actual verbiage. And is, is this hardship created? How, what hardship is there here? I mean, the house is fairly large. You can go up. We've already said that. Like I said, a forty-six by sixty foot garage, whether or not it's for a sport court or not, again, it's pretty hard sell for us to say, okay, fine, now we'll give you a variance for that. There's all kinds of other opportunities in the community for all kinds of, of physical activities. So I think it's going to be, it would be a real hard sell, I think, for us to say, yes, go ahead.
The garage is forty-six by sixty. The current tennis court is sixty by one twenty. So I'm removing a large portion of hardcover in order to create the garage.
We understand that. We understand that.
Because the other options that I've worked through, which does not require a variance, is I can actually close that entire tennis court and create an indoor.
I'm not sure. I don't think you could do that. I'm sorry.
It would require a variance to do that. It would be a change of use and it's not going to.
It's an indoor tennis court, so I, I've met with Nick on this. I've literally spent hours on the phone discussing that. In order for, as long as we're not changing the use of it, so we're creating an indoor tennis court, we don't need to, we need a permit to do that, we don't need a variance to do that.
Well, it wouldn't meet setbacks. It's now, now it's a structure.
Right.
And so you would need a variance.
The current structure.
Not from the road though. There's setbacks from all the property lines. You're right on the County Road forty-four property line. So you're, you're going to likely, you'd need two variances. You need a street side setback variance and you need a side yard setback variance.
Okay. I know the conversation ahead of Nick said there wasn't variance required just because I'm not changing the use of, or the structure or the use of the property.
No, Nick and I have talked about that at length and that's not.
I mean, I did go down that path.
Sure.
Because it just doesn't seem like the smartest idea.
Well, yeah, like I said, you'd need, well, you'd need two variances and plus you're exceeding, well, it depends on if that's all you're going to do. You'd have to look at that.
But it would still be exceeding the hardcover.
Well, but it's, it's nonconformity, but he'd need two variances.
And we looked at the option of reducing, there's an option to reduce the size of the driveway to skinny it up a little bit and, and keep the garage almost the same size, but then we couldn't do the conveyance because the conveyance gets us from thirty-one point seven percent to, or from thirty-six percent to thirty-one point seven percent. So we didn't do the conveyance. We'd only need to make up six point seven percent to do that. So without the, without some exception to the hardcover, it would be, it would not be in my best interest to do the conveyance to the neighbor.
Why don't you go back to the drawing board? If you're only talking about seven, eight percent, it's pretty minimal. Like I said, I think it's hard for the council to look at our ordinance and then to say it's okay to have a sport court. And when you're exceeding the hardcover, that's the, the thing that we're, we're up against here. Because we have to make sure that, that we follow the ordinance unless it's a situation where you can't use the property in a normal fashion. And I think it'd be a hard sell to say you can't use it if you don't have the sport court. If, please understand our, our situation and our perspective on it too. Because, and if we have an opportunity here to bring it into compliance, which I, I look at this plan and I say, there's opportunities here for you and for your neighbor. So I think you just need to go back to the drawing board.
So would the city council say that if it came into compliance with, with the conveyance, so would I have to go all the way to twenty-five percent with the conveyance? Or could I go to the thirty-one point seven percent that I get and still be able to do the conveyance so that Jim can have the drainage that he needs?
I think it depends on what you bring back.
Yeah, see.
This is too big. This, this isn't, no, this isn't a hardship. This is a sport car and a really, really big garage.
Think you can do it.
We kind of had this discussion with the planning commission. Former planning commission was Brad about twenty-five percent. And they went to vote and it was three to one and she was the only one. So I guess at this point I'll vote on that, so we're standing officially and then figure out what to do from then. Second, it'd be.
Well, what we can do is we could vote to deny your variance tonight and then you're back to square one, okay? And correct me if I'm wrong, but if we say, look, go back to the drawing board and. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if we say, look, go back to the drawing board and redo it, I think you're still under the same per, variance, is that, or under the same application? Is that correct? Okay, so do you want us to deny it tonight, and then you're back to square one? Then you have to go back and reapply, and then you have to go back to the Planning Commission, and then you have to come back to the council?
No, it's not.
That's why I'm saying, I don't think we want to deny it tonight, but we're giving you clear direction, okay? Go back to the drawing board, and then you can come back. You don't have to go back to the Planning Commission, you can come back here. I think we would like to see something as close to the twenty-five percent. How much, what is the size, the width of the, how much are you conveying square footage to the neighboring property?
It's fifteen feet on the lakeside and twenty-five feet on the roadside.
And how long?
It's a hundred and thirty-five feet, so it's like twenty-three hundred square feet.
Okay, so it's very, very minimal amount. So see if you can work all of that out and come back.
I have one other question. With the, this was in three pieces, it was a conveyance, hardcover in the house.
I think, so the current house sits seventeen feet from the water's edge, and we're not asking you to tear it down. You need a variance for that because you're going up.
The only thing we're debating now is hardcover, right?
Yes.
So as long as we come back with a plan that you're asking for, twenty-five percent, are we passed on the other portion of it, is what we're asking?
Yeah, I have no problem.
Yes, I don't have any problem. It's going to be the same footprint, you're just, you're going up. I don't think we have a problem with that. If you do a garage addition, I think that, as you have shown here, it's more than seventy-five feet. So the garage addition is going to be back further.
Correct, other than the connector.
Right.
And just for the record, I mean, if you get to twenty-five percent, you no longer need a variance for hardcover.
Correct. So but then we're still back to this conveyance.
Sure.
So I guess we're asking is, you know...
Well, I guess in my proposal, if I have to get a twenty-five percent hardcover, I'm not, I'm not going to do the conveyance. I'm sorry. I know we've been talking about this for years, but it just doesn't matter. You can still use the land, it will still be the same, but I mean, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to sell land to my neighbor at under value, because we're not getting normal lakeshore values for it. It's a good price, but it's not a great price. It would work to help him.
Maybe, Mr., could you, could somebody do the numbers and say, okay, the twenty-three hundred square feet that you're conveying to him, where does that put you in terms of?
It's thirty-one point seven percent.
Okay.
So if we don't sell it to him, then I'm immediately at thirty-one point seven percent. And then all I would need to do to get to twenty-five percent from there, I would need to reduce the size of the driveway and some of the other structures that are on the property. So I can, I would have a much smaller driveway, I'd have to take out much of the concrete around the house that I have, redo some of the landscaping, and I believe that we could get it in as it sits right now, without the conveyance, and with reducing some of those things, we could get it down to twenty-five percent. But it would be some work to make that happen.
Okay. So...
So I guess he tried to actually still give the neighbor conveyance, whereas can...
Get it back with twenty-five percent, including the conveyance.
Okay.
And we'll see what's there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that clear? Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, then, we'll move on to, because we already addressed the subdivision, and we'll move on to staff reports. Thank you. All right. Jasper.
Thank you. I don't have much tonight, other than, you'll probably mention this, but tomorrow is nineteen night, so we do have those neighborhood meetings coming up on the sixteenth and seventeenth. Sixteenth is the Morning View, East View, Westwood area, and the seventeenth is the North Arm, Trails End area as well. So those are both five to seven, and if you're interested in the project, definitely come by and visit us. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other staff reports?
I just have a short one.
Okay.
I just wanted to give the council a heads up that we will be undergoing a conversion to an online city code management system through MuniCode. The system will help the city with updating, organizing, and managing the city code. Most surrounding municipal, municip, I can never say that word.
Municipalities.
Cities have some sort of online code management system, and Orno Buffalo, Chaska, and Independence are some that use MuniCode currently. As if you've tried to look at the city code, it's held on a Word document, which is then converted into a PDF, which is then uploaded to the website. With MuniCode, the entire city code will be hosted on a web-based platform, and they will then be responsible for our code management and updating. We plan to start the conversion process as soon as possible, and we expect it to be completed within four to five months. Our first billing cycle will be Jan. one of twenty-three, and the annual fee will be a little under three thousand dollars to be taken from the cable fund. So that's number one. And number two, we have three interviews with police officer candidates on Wednesday, so we are hopeful with some of those.
Wow, three.
Three, yes. Yeah, so we are hopeful with some of those.
Okay, good, good, good news. All right. All right.
One, we just need one.
Yeah, we just need one, but we have three candidates. That's good news. All right. Any other staff reports? Otherwise, we'll move to council reports. I have none. Yes, I was on vacation for a while, so I actually took very few calls anyhow. All right, with that.
I have none as well.
I don't have one tonight. I will handle the Westonka Community Commerce next week, next time.
Thank you. And Kathleen?
I don't really have anything. You, Lisa, myself, and Jasper are meeting with Woodland Cove residents on Wednesday to answer some of their concerns.
Right. And, yep, and I'll be attending National Night Out. We will try and make as many, I'll be out with the chief and McGruff, and we will try and make as many parties as we possibly can. So with that, thank you very much, a good meeting. Thank you, staff. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes.